I'd like to call this meeting to order. And ask that we do roll call, please. Blue, Discheroon, here. Henry, here. Paul Towsor, here. Humboltz, here. Wagenbach, here. Wisdom, here. May I ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
The board will now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? And if so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, this concludes the public participation portion of our meeting. The board will now move on to the information discussion items. I'm going to turn this part over to Dr. Deere, so he can facilitate the discussion. Thank you, Dr. Deere.
Don't you need me to use this for it to pick up?
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll hold this thing. Alright, tonight we've got two items for information discussion. Board goals, long-term, and then board priorities nineteen twenty. They're listed as two separate items, but I'm not sure that they technically are. They kind of go hand in hand. Couple of things before we start. I am not a motivational speaker. I am not a professional goal-setting. Those that work in the business sector probably do this type of stuff all the time and probably much more versed at it than I am. So I'm going to take more of a common sense approach to these two priority items, these two items on the list. With that being said, you know, we kind of need an idea of what this is and what it isn't. We're not going to solve all of the issues and concerns in one meeting in one night. This is the beginning, in my opinion, of a process of kind of getting a direction of where we want to go, a roadmap. Now, there is something behind me that I had Carrie bring, because I didn't see one in here. You know, we're not changing this, the strategic plan. There's a lot of people that did a lot of work on that and developed it. Obviously, you can see the dates on it. It's still valid. It's still good. It's a good piece of work. And we're still working on some of those things that are in there. So this is not a strategic planning session. This is, as we said, just some goals for the board and some priorities. With that being said, we kind of need to have an idea of what are we hoping to accomplish? What is the goal? What are we trying to get out of this tonight? You know, the bigger the target is, the easier it is to hit. So we kind of need to get some ideas of some targets. I'll lead off with an example. Damon Hackett, Assistant Superintendent, has been asked to give some financial projections. Very valid. I think he needs to do that. And I think that's good information, especially in light of recent budget and the economy that the Peoria area, Dunlap community, is in. Very wise. We need to do that, certainly. With that being said, we also need to look at, you know, what's going on as far as the athletic leadership team? They put together a plan not too long ago and had it, I think, as a five-year plan on the athletic leadership team with different things that they have listed as priorities. So we have Damon that's going to do some forecasting. We've got the athletic leadership team. And then with that, Tom Grimm just submitted, or he's had it for a while, but we've been reviewing, his five-year facility plan as far as parking lots, roofs, air handlers, kitchen equipment, things of that nature. Some of those things that we need to do preventive maintenance on and keep our buildings, you know, in good shape. So we've got these three different things. What I see as a priority, or a goal, however you want to phrase it, is can we take these three things and kind of put them on one? So we have a year-by-year list of, these are the big-ticket items that we're looking at. These are the projected costs. These are the revenues that we are anticipating. I mean, no one's got a crystal ball, but at least we have an idea and we're planning for the future, no different than what you would do at home when you budget and finance, plan on different things that are coming your way. So to me, that's kind of an example of what I would like to see come out of that. So that's one example of maybe a goal and then some strategies of how we're going to get there and organize that. I'm not here to lead the discussion. This is not Scott dictating to the board, pardon me, or anyone else. This is me leading a discussion. I'm curious, from the board members' perspectives, what are the takeaways that we're hoping to come up with tonight? What are the goals that you see as being something we need to accomplish this evening?
I mean, I just agree with you. I think they need to be broad goals and, you know, things we want to do for the next year and also long-term goals as well. So I would agree with what you said.
And I met yesterday, yeah, yesterday, these are kind of running together with you. We have our monthly athletic, excuse me, District Office Administrative Leadership Team meeting. So everyone is there, from food service, transportation, maintenance, all the principals, all the district office staff. We all meet, and we had this discussion amongst ourselves because I said, "Give me your items that you would like to have for priority items and long-term goals." So they gave those to me. Some are very specific. I'm not, I'm with Karen. I don't think we need to dig that. That's not something that I think we can kill in one meeting. But some of the overarching things, you know, the number of initiatives that we have going was a pretty common theme. So if we don't have direction, it seems like a lot of the feedback I was getting from my team is, "We just keep bouncing from goal to goal to goal to goal to goal, and we don't seem to have a clear direction of where we want to go." So they would like to see like a priority list from the board. What is the low-hanging fruit, to use an analogy I've heard several times here as of late, of some things that we really need to get on right now that the board would like to see, the community would like to see, that would be beneficial to the Dunlap community? So that's kind of from my district leadership team, what they've shared with me. I'll use myself as an example. I would like that personally from the board to give me. I've got goals in my contract. I've got goals on my evaluation. Some of them are similar. We had a district leadership team, community thing that met in the library last year. Some of you were on that. There were some goals that came out of that. And there's probably some goals that are going to come out of this. So I've got like four different sets of goals. I'd like to kind of rank order. Where do you want me to focus my attention first? I am a taskmaster. I'm a mathematician by nature, and I like to have things listed in order. So if I had a list of, "Scott, we need you to hit this, this, and this. This is a priority to us," that would be great. And then I could relay that to my team because I'm going to need some help probably on some of these. And I've got some people that are good at helping in those types of arenas. That would be nice. And that's just, that's Scott's perspective.
Okay. So you want us to just start doing some post notes and stick them on the boards?
Well, the first thing, I think, and this is again, just me having an idea, what are your, what are you hoping to take away from this tonight? Karen voiced her opinion, what she thought, her takeaways. Any other conversation on that? We're looking, Karen, would you say that again, what you thought?
Well, I mean, I think we need to talk about what we hope to accomplish short-term, you know, in the next year. And, but then also look at long-range goals for the district. So I would say, you know, our top, I don't know how many, five to ten.
And then, you know, we have a lot of educators in the room, but we talk about smart goals. They need to be specific and measurable, realistic, timely, achievable, all those different things. You know, who's going to monitor those? What is our step-by-step progress monitoring of attaining those goals? I think once we get some bigger overarching goals, maybe we can break that down. And that will help develop some of our priorities as far as the direction we need to go to get those accomplished. Michael, go ahead, sir.
Any goals that we talk about tonight, any objectives we have, anything we do, it's going to involve money. And after our last budget, there's kind of a cloud over us. So what I hope to come out of this tonight is I, I'm hoping to have some direction on how we're going to deal with the cloud. I don't see us being able to do a lot of things that we'd like to do, new or different, with those kind of constraints looming over us. So one of the, one of the priorities to me is looking at our financial situation and seeing how we can improve it for the next few years going forward. And that, to me, is really extremely important because I think that bears on everything else that we want to do.
With that being said, when you say improve it, specifically, what does that mean? How is that measurable?
You know, that we have an income and we have expenses, and you can't cut your way to prosperity. Unfortunately, we have limited ways that we can improve our revenue sources. Maybe there are more efficient ways we can use the monies that we have. But one of the things I would like to do, I have some thoughts and ideas on this, is within those parameters of what we can do to increase our revenue streams, what would we like to do? And there are, I think there are some things that we can improve. And so I'll be pointing those out in the course of the evening. Those are some things I've thought about. I hate the word "cut." I don't want to see programs or personnel cut. So if that's the case, what can we do? Be more efficient?
Tighten our belt.
Tighten our belt or generate more revenue. So that's pretty high on my priority list because it's something I know versus a lot of these simple, about the school district, I don't know yet.
I tend to agree as far as looking at, you know, how we're spending money and the ways that we could possibly tighten our belt. My focus, the things that I wrote down basically, are other things that deal with, you know, communication, transportation, department offerings, building facilities, finances. But not all of these do take money, you know. I think we have some creative ideas, and you and I talked about this. I would like to see, just as the State Board of Education has a student advisory, I would like to see us maybe tap into our student councils and have a student advisory where they would meet with you and a board member, whether it's president or vice president, so that they also have a voice or at least a way to communicate. And I'm not talking about having them be part of a board meeting necessarily, unless they want to present and tell us the cool things that they do. You know, that doesn't take money, but I think it works very well as far as building relationships with students, and not just students, but parents. Other things, like the policies and the changes that we get, I think one idea that I heard was, you know, when we get those, have a copy of the old policy, the new policy, and the red line so that we know exactly what's being changed and exactly what we're voting on. And that can be done at home. So I have several ideas like that. Another idea, which sounds very simple, but, you know, when people pull into our school, how our properties are maintained, that represents Norwood, Dunlap. And I think, you know, some of the things that Mike or Tim's pointed out, like the weeds, if they're growing, and we're having open house and, you know. I know, as teachers and educators, we're always so busy taking care of what's going on on the inside of the building. But that's important, too. And there are ways that we could address that, whether we have a, you know, an ag club or, you know, I don't know what clubs they have. Maybe students could help with that. Those are some creative things I think we can do that don't necessarily cost money. Maybe small things, but I think they have a big impact. So that's kind of what I focused on. I only had a few really long-term ideas because I think we've really hit the ground running with the district office, with the pool. And so I think, you know, those were some of the long-term goals that I had before. So that's kind of what I'm looking for tonight, is maybe address some of these things that we can do easily and quickly that don't take a lot of time or money. So that's just my.
I think how we get a good timing. For those who don't know, the board was, they knew this was coming. Was asked to think of some, you know, priorities, long-term information to put up on the different boards. And I, Mrs. Blue submitted hers. So we have hers, so we can put, so her voice will be heard. And I've got mine from my distribution team that I need to put up. So anybody opposed, let's go ahead and just throw those up on the wall and see what we got.
Sounds good. You've got a post-it note right there. No, we can write several. One idea. You can have Cheryl's. Blue matches.
I'm kind of curious, for those of y'all who aren't part of this process, but you know, you see it everywhere when you walk in here, Team Dunlap, just kind of shaking their head. If you were up there, what would your control turn along from our, maybe? Let's see if they match. If you're, just one.
Good luck reading my writing.
Who's the pink? Oh, she wants to be done, Teresa's. Oh, okay. Or Cheryl's? No, Cheryl's, Cheryl's.
I don't know, I put out fires. I don't know what we do. We get that.
It's a responsibility.
Yeah, right.
And put trade and location.
Yeah, right. I can't read without my glasses on anymore. I'm probably supposed to put these on all separate notes.
Yep, all separate notes.
Hello, Cheryl?
There's a couple more here. Yes, sir.
Are you in the numbers?
Today would have been a good day to come out and see the elevator, wouldn't it?
So, so, when you're drying your hair.
You know, we brought you one tower dryer. You put it in, it slowly comes down, dries as it goes out. So they brought it in, and I just put it up here, and then I had a whole bunch to dry. So I had to stay all night. I had to stay all night. I just made an early sleep. And I was going to make sure the dryer didn't run out of the little hole. It all comes to us, already a shell.
Yeah, I think that's interesting to see. I think my daughter would really be interested.
Yeah, she could.
Maybe we could test it apart, but I had a lot of tests to do. And they come back with all the bloody phones and.
I don't know, it's just stuck in its own machine now.
That's great.
I mean, it didn't do tests on it differently, you know, but.
She was like five, ten or something.
You wouldn't read my, you don't read my cats right now.
I do. I try and sleep till like five, four. My mom's here, so I have to listen to my lessons.
Hey, you know, it's a long person, or a short.
Yeah, so my mom is, plus my daughter is, we have to get on the lessons. Like until she's out of school, I'm always, my dad still wakes up on that.
I'd go and fall back asleep. Yeah, not right away, but.
He can sleep till eight, nine o'clock. Or he can, I can't, but then he can stay up late, too. I find that I sleep better if you try to keep consistent. Time, don't deviate too far.
I think so.
I'd say, yeah, within here. Oh, well. You should probably ask him real quick. You really said that for my behalf, but I bet you didn't mind doing it.
I agree. I know. I used to, like, fully, like, in Queens, just go fast.
So I might just get more, get into school, I go through the line.
And back again.
But then I do it a lot.
But if you want them, I didn't stop now. She's going to be spraying.
I love them all. I'm a big person. I shit, take a big angle.
I can, but I can't, it's just like, I can't pass.
Really?
And above them, I used to go, "What did we bring in?" Every year, we get these things. It's a big, like, dairy. It's, I don't know, it keeps you scared. Last. They're called something, I don't know. That's okay, that's like a date, they're on the ground. It keeps them real. Like, so. So.
Come back here. No, some are approved, Cheryl. Some are approved.
Only if it's a bad case or something, but you don't want to have the mice and all that. You know, like.
Anna, you're still going? Did your time?
Your house and base control comes in our house, it sprays our household. I know it's legal, but.
Not in the school, though. They have these new green plants. I mean, it's crazy.
I can blame my mom.
Is everybody got a deal? I think just for time purposes, maybe if we do three and three, if you guys could take those, long-term, and kind of, if there's commonalities, kind of just make a row, kind of cluster them. So if we take all that different, maybe now start to make a little organization to it. If you guys could take the shorts, maybe somehow, if there's commonalities.
Could have begun it?
Yeah. There's lawyers and health laws, all of them.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Finance, all the finance, you know. Heard of the ones? If you can.
Well, they've got to figure it out.
Sure.
Do we have a marker?
Hey Karen, the big buyers of the policy manuals, who do you have those?
Um, I have them ready except for the policies that I've submitted, the revisions that were just made.
Okay.
So I've got everything ready, except I'm expecting revisions back from them after that last board meeting, and then I was gonna insert the new ones.
Think you'll have by the third?
I can hand them out without those if I need to, if I don't have them by then, yeah.
Are you bringing us a post-it? Can you look at them?
Aren't you gonna read them all over? They don't dance like you do, Chad.
Really?
Who else?
Nobody else is right on there.
Where's your meeting up at?
Up there.
Add one.
Remember, you're a math teacher.
Everybody got it up there?
Yes.
Alright, so if you look at the headings, and we could see yours, and we could see yours, my eyes aren't making any of those, they're, they're just stuff. So, that's good, it's kind of open, I don't have to definitely be sure the long-term goals, because if you're taking a short-term goal, a step towards it, it should also lead to the long-term goal, the question that we ask, why don't you step back, actually, it's not leading to where you want to go. Um, so I think that's really good. Forty-four here, twenty-four there. If you do the math, sixty-eight goals, not someone over that, that's an overwhelming task. So I, so now I think the next step is, alright, under these topics, we narrow it down to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about the different ones here, I think we have about six over there, seven?
Seven.
About eight to seven. Can we take what's in the columns now, come back over to the winged sheet paper, and maybe start prioritizing low-hanging fruit?
So, when you say low-hanging fruit, you mean the most important things, or do you mean the easiest things?
Under short-term, there's, they should be, they're short-term, something we can address. Um, it's take the ones that were, can we take those and condense, instead of under curriculum, we've got about fifteen or twenty here.
Oh, just...
Can we condense those, maybe down into four or five?
Maybe.
Same thing here, this one won't be quite as bad, because there's no more than, what, five, I think, in one column? So can we maybe just combine those if possible, and then let's write those out, write them out here, and then we can take those, I, this is just my thing, if you guys want to do it, come on. But once we get those condensed, then we look at, okay, what's the, what's one, what's two, what's three, what's four, what's five? That's just my thought, what do you guys think?
Sounds good to me.
Fine.
Did we lose Mike?
Maybe he needs it.
Take a break.
Take a break.
Do we include in some order two, some that are like, pretty simple to implement, maybe is that one-handed proof, like you can get it done without a lot of effort?
But I guess it really does have to be priorities.
Okay, alright, alright.
That's the comment, the next step, I would do prior, once we get them condensed, then we prioritize.
Yeah, some of these are really small, and so maybe the really small, I feel like they, they shouldn't be taken off the list, though.
If you want to, because for the condensing process.
Okay.
Obviously, we can't have fifteen different curriculums, you know, it's a short-term goal. So I'm guessing some of those are, I maybe did that...
Well, I think you could have, you know, a one-word statement, you know?
Yeah.
You don't have to write the whole thing out, but we could even type these up, and then, you know, revisit them, or, or, or...
I think it'd be good to have a general, a general topic, and then some action steps below.
Bullets under, oh, what, how, how are you gonna go about it, or just?
Yeah. I mean, that's me, but I'm more of a...
I think if we put the goal out there, identify what it is, I think then the administration could possibly give us some ideas of how they would suggest to implement that. Or we'll be here all night. So if we sit, list them, and then we can revisit them, or we could provide feedback via email, to vote on what you think your priorities are.
Okay.
Um, I'm just afraid if we try to have action plans for all of those tonight.
No, I didn't mean that, but I mean, a lot of them are the same.
Yeah, okay.
Well, should we do one real quick?
Sure, sure.
Uh, what we're hearing, these are long terms, remember, facilities is this column here, and so I can read them to you. Uh, the facility, this is mine, so the conversation was with, you know, are we, what are we gonna do with our facilities, long-term again? Are we gonna add on to Hickory Grove, we got property wilder weight, we get to something there, we, you know, we can add on banner, we can add on originally, what is our plan as far as facilities? Because as we know, Hickory Grove is full currently, now we have decision insight, which has to give projections, and we're predicting that to be stable for a while. So I don't think this is a short-term goal, because we're not busting at the seams right now, or it's a major issue. But we are having kids go to not their own school because it's full. Uh, if we get any kind of growth, it's gonna get even bigger issue.
Wasn't the projected growth for the Wilder Weight area?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's the question, i- if, long-term, what are we looking at for facilities? I had a conversation in the community about, you know, dumbass grades in older school, Wilder Weight's older, are we gonna build a new school? I don't know, so that's a facility question, what are we gonna do long-term there? Um, prioritize comprehensive facility plan, facility needs and cost estimates, i.e. track, turf, Hickory Grove, gym, et cetera. So under facilities, if we were to combine these and try and condense this, what would that look like?
Future growth needs? Or create comprehensive facilities plan, need, uh, needs plan?
I'm sorry, Karen.
Create a comprehensive facilities plan? Are these action, or are they just topics?
Just topics.
Okay.
So we need to look at our growth needs.
Growth and maintenance, right?
Did you say turf, did I hear?
Yeah, because we have track and turf coming up.
That was, that was on there.
Okay, so this is, so this is like athletics too? Are the athletics under this? Because it's all facilities.
Yeah, because that was part of the athletic leadership team, I mean, our track, it's pretty rough, pretty much done right now, football field's probably here, right, we're gonna have to address that, here.
That might be short-term, but I would say growth and maintenance, don't you think?
Yes, because, in fact, we had a plan that listed all this not too long ago, that I saw.
So maintenance teams?
Yeah.
So I think that's pretty much covered, it hits everything that they have listed here, something to consider. So even fifty, so we went from three to two, but it needs to kind of go hand-to-hand a little bit, so I think those need to be blacked out. Uh, our plan, let's see, we should come up with, if we can condense these down to forty-four, about maybe something like that.
Do we have a marker?
Make it nice over there.
It's, it's offering, it's offering, um, it's offering more, and making sure that our students know about this. Karen?
Can we get some clarification on this one?
Oh, you can't remember?
No, we can read it, we just don't know what you were, how you want us to measure it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you talking about student data, or...
I'm just talking about...
Sons pride?
Uh, I'm talking about whether or not they were working in a labor or a career, so making sure we have a focus on long-term, the process, whatever, or something.
Okay. So we stay current?
Yeah, okay. To draw. Now, you know, the real best is great, it's...
That's what I said, actually, it's sort of my...
Lately, I try to...
Lately, I try to, you know, wear shoes. Do you? Because of.
And it's kind of, yeah.
That also.
So should we just say, you know, for example, I was like, what do I ask? I'm thinking, I'm saying, that's, first of all. I have to, I would still say in the late times, so I can say here. Because that, of course, I can, this is. I would say that it's, it's.
Yeah.
What, it's a play.
Well, this is all just a special.
Just to go. So. No. And I, I think. So I guess, yeah. Yeah, it should demonstrate that we never. No, I was.
Well, of course. How can you chat? Oh. So these are the folks, um, so it's like terms or Damon, kind of, you know, first disciplines.
I've worked with, it's with the working.
Yeah.
They know, so, you know, they work in, so.
I would pretty much say.
No.
Okay. Utilities are all there.
They can take down that and start from what they have, the foundation. I think they have ten, I want to build your process. That's what I do. And I look at the same, that's why I'm, see, I'm, and I have the, I'm, I want to come in. I said, if you have, you know, one else, one. I want to lead it.
Did we talk about third or second?
That's what, that's what David, that, that, that's what I would like to do. What I would like to do is, I would, was I would, to, 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 to.
We saw your three ones with that. We can raise you. One.
Show off.
Did you do one?
No Karen, one A, one B, one C.
That's why you do it is to signify.
You're absolutely right. It has, that's why I was, I remember twenty, that you were using. You're absolutely, you're never gonna get it. That's why you don't want to project too many.
Do you wanna see one of the cutest little grandmothers of all? You saw her already.
I saw her live. Is there a picture now?
All right, as we look at these. We have four number ones in the short term. Finance, curriculum, communication, and then trades. Number two is facilities. Three is reducing. Three is reducing activities. Four is safety and finance, social emotional. And if you go over here, you have three number ones. Facilities, finance, curriculum, and then social emotional learning. There's a lot of commonalities between these which makes perfect sense. And they have that to great. So if we could, let's look at the number ones under short term and then. Short term is something that we get hopefully after right away. What are some action steps? So as a board, you say that's my short term goal finance. Forecasting, spending, improve efficiency, explore increased revenues. How are you gonna measure that? How is it observable that that short term goals are gonna be? What do you wanna see?
I think for the projections.
Right, what can I do? Oh. What's that?
I think for the projections, we would like staff to prepare, you know, at least three year budget projections with, with some assumptions in there on EAV. And I think we have heard from the county that it's, we already know it's minus three this year. They're projecting minus three next year. And the best he can give is flat for the following year. So that's what I would do. And then build in what we know are the expenses which are, I did a little sheet actually on the financial projections of my own. And happy to share with you, but, you know, annual salary and benefits goes up, I believe it's eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand every year. And, and then, you know, project the revenue based on EAV and any other expenses we know and have a, a three year kind of budget projection of what our deficits will be.
And as Teresa said, that's an ongoing document that changes as they get different information.
And we had over there a long term, like I think it fits here. And what are the other things with them? As things come out change, different information comes in.
That's a great idea.
I mean, there's, did you ask staff if they have efficiency recommendations? Where, where can we be more efficient? Were we wasting money or were we?
I haven't yet because we didn't have goals.
I mean, that would be a, that would be a part of that goal, I think.
Yeah, I would say coming up with, you know, where, places where if, if the board wants to reduce expenses, where we can. Optimization.
Very good. Next one. Curriculum.
But I think, Mike, you also had an idea on increasing revenues.
Yeah, if you're ready to start talking about that, are we just working through the priorities now?
No, he said he wants some action steps now.
Yeah, I mean, what would you like to see on a short, short term goal to show that that is being met?
All right, first, first let me say, one, the first, the first step in it is forecasting, right? Knowing where we think we're gonna be. And. I'm just gonna take a few minutes and talk about this. I hope, I hope I haven't overstepped my bounds, but I've done it anyway. So if I have, then I have. I've talked to some contacts I know in the industry in finance and, and investments. And, and I've learned some things. And one thing they told me is if you wanna investigate something for projections, there's something called forecast five.
Forecast five analytics.
Yeah, you know about that?
And work on.
Okay, 'cause he said that was really strong. As I was mentioning earlier, we don't have a whole lot of ways to increase revenues. The taxes for the most part, and, and that's what we have. Anything else that we have is relatively small compared to that. But, and I don't know how to improve on that other than raising taxes, which nobody wants to do, okay? The one thing that can be done is looking at. We have to have large reserves. It's not that we're trying to make money off the taxpayers. We don't have a choice. We have to have reserves. And they're fairly sizable reserves. Now, the thing that we can do is put those in investments, which is what we really need to do if we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money. All right? So, one of the things I think we need to focus on is what we're doing with those reserves, 'cause they're fairly large. We, we recently made a change. We, we talked about making a change and then the bank that we use just unilaterally raised our money market rates. Hallelujah. But we need to, to, to really hone in on that and make sure that the monies that we're investing, maximizing the returns on those. And what I found out is, and I'm going to be giving the names, and this is not taking anything away from Damon. I think, I think Damon, and when Teresa and I met with him, came away with the feeling that he understands this. He's just as concerned about it as we are. The way I understand it is the board used to have a consultant that they use that assisted with the investments. Looked at what we're doing. When things were, were coming up, they might give suggestions on where to invest. There are some companies out there that, that may wait, we may wanna think about maybe engaging somebody to do a similar thing, to maximize the returns that we've got on our reserves. And what I've been told is, is some of these companies, and again, I'm getting some names on that, will sit down with us and take a look at our investments and give us some honest feedback. And you're good. You're probably as good as you can get, given the limited amount of alternatives that school districts have. Or they may say, you're good, but you could be better. You, you, a little better, a lot better. Better to me would be, returns that are significantly above what they're gonna cost us. But we don't know that unless we bring somebody in.
See what they're gonna cost us? What the financial advisors are gonna charge us?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, for, for providing this advice or this service. So, that's an area that I think poses a, an opportunity for us to increase the revenue stream. One of the few revenue streams that we have. And, and I would like to see us maybe think about going in that direction. At least investigating whether one or more of these companies would be a good source for us to, to assist Damon and this board with the investments.
I think that's all of those. Three year projections, quarterly reports, and then looking at ways to be more efficient and increasing revenues by potentially investing with services through private education, research that may be done, all certainly observable, certainly measurable, now a new person that is responsible. And so Damon?
I would think that on the forecasting, it would be Damon. And on the, the ways to reduce costs would probably be you.
On the ways where we can be more efficient.
Ways to, I would say reduce costs. You could say and be more efficient.
Yeah.
And then, what do you think for the?
Financial advisor.
Financial advisors. Would that be a Damon thing?
I would like to see our superintendent also have an active part in that. At least be included in those discussions. It's a pretty important part of what a superintendent.
Okay.
If there's any, I mean, I'd be glad to assist.
I mean, one board member could be in on that too, right? Something like that.
Yeah, are you looking for just staff or staff and board members?
I think of something like that, like you have the board members along. It's a pretty significant decision to make.
Yep.
And I don't have a problem getting involved on that side of it. Actually, I enjoy that type of stuff, so.
Good.
I don't have a problem with that. I think it's a solid, my answer should be something like a lot of that input goes over there, long term.
Yeah, I think so.
The role we have for finance, budgets, budget forecasting.
I'm gonna take that over there.
Budget forecasting and quarterly updates.
Do you wanna take that with? You wanna take that over there?
Yeah. All right, second one.
Doctor Dunne.
Curriculum.
I think Teresa has a comment.
On, on the efficiencies, I think that was in there, right? Is that number two? I think that should be a more of a collaborative effort with maybe Damon leading it with the, let's say the school principals or someone, because I think that's more of just the, more than a one person. They need to look at the entire. I think it needs to be more of a collaborative effort. I think we'll get more from it that way.
Oh yeah, I agree. I thought you were just asking for the lead. Yeah.
So, taking the lead off that, now is Damon the principal?
No, 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 no. It has to be you.
You and the principals, looking at their individual school budgets.
Because you're, you're, you're looking for those efficiencies and I, I don't know that Damon would. And he needs that additional.
And it's more, and it's more than efficiencies. It's, I mean, it's, it's ways to reduce.
Well, absolutely.
Expenses. Yeah, so they have to have input.
Right, exactly.
Anybody else? Second one's curriculum. Says approve communication to parents and students of offering.
No, that's communication.
Review access to courses and course offerings with goal of student achievement and mission.
And I think our thought on that one was, you know, some of the issues of access we're trying to address in the next couple of months, but there are some that are gonna be long term, that will need a committee or, you know, collaboration between the staff and the board to come up with. So, just looking at those.
I think maybe that we put together, if it's, whether it's Damon, it's addressing that short term.
Right.
Right now.
Yeah, and I think it should just, something like that or that should continue is my thought.
Is this, is this all of the curriculum that we're talking about right now?
This part is.
This is more narrow right now, but I think.
This is maybe the short term.
Okay, is this, is this dealing with vocational opportunities?
No, that's a different one.
It is.
We could have that over there. It would be part of it eventually.
But it would, could, could be included in it. We had a separate item for trades, but we can make it.
Somebody tell me when it is, 'cause I, I wanna talk about it. I didn't say anything on Monday, so I've stored up.
That's also a double point length over there.
What's that? Okay. Oh, all right. You want me to talk about it now or you want me to wait?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. One of the things when I was campaigning and it was, I heard a great deal. Dunlap does such a great job with its, its upper level students, which is most of our students, but sometimes, other kids who aren't quite as, as adept, don't quite know as much worth of turn. And it always comes back to providing vocational training or trades training and that type of thing. We don't have, at least at this point, we don't have enough of a demand for that. For us to go out and be spending hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars on a vocational arts center, we don't. And the fact of the matter is, we don't need to. There are a lot of other options out there. We already do co-ops with ICC, collaborations with them. One of the things I, I think we should do is, let me take a step back. Right now ICC is building a twelve million dollar new vocational arts center. And they're expanding their offerings. So, I, I think we ought to be looking at all of those potential collaborations and co-ops that we can do for vocational arts. And then making sure that we've got the waterfront covered so that we can provide these kids who really don't wanna go on to college or just don't have the aptitude to go on to college. They can get some kind of training so they can go on and, and get jobs and provide a satisfactory quality of life for them and their families. And so I think that's something we need to take a really hard look at and make sure that we're pursuing all of those options. And then, once we know all those, we find ways to communicate to all of our students. 'Cause those hard charging AP students and dual credits, they're gonna find out that stuff. They or their parents are gonna find out that stuff. But some of the kids who, who are probably maybe looking for the vocational training, they may not know where to go as much. So let's help them.
They may or may not have some.
How do you observe that? How do you measure and for exploring those opportunities with ICC? What is that all about?
To me, it's simple enough. Somebody's contacting them and sitting down with them and, and finding out what, what all they're, they're offering now and what they're going to be offering in their new vocational arts center. And seeing what we can tie into, how we can, give our students opportunities to take advantage of those facilities and those services. I, I don't know. I don't think it's any more complex than that. But I will say that, and I don't know who else, all is out there. I know Caterpillar has some co-op opportunities. We should try to brainstorm a little bit and see who else offers though. You know, can we tie into Woodruff? I don't know. Maybe.
They're part of, which we actually aren't tying into. They're part of perfect. But some of their programs, they will open up to us as they are.
Full.
Their students are not gonna displace their home to accommodate ours. And some of their programs, our students just don't have a lot of interest, especially who wants to, some of the cosmetology, hair brushing, still have a lot of kids.
Do, do we have a particular person who is, is, is in charge of that kinda work?
Yep, Amy Stepansky.
Okay.
Or Angie Stansel. Is it Amy Stepansky? I mixed that.
So, I think I'll, I think she would be the perfect person to. We used to have a conversation with ICC, what's going on with the facility, how can we get entrepreneurship with people that would like to build them for us? If they're building that facility, they're gonna love you.
I would think so. And then, but I would first, personally, I'd like to have a report back to this board on, on what her findings are.
Sure.
And I.
The other thing is they, through ICC, there are some dual credits that you can get high school and college credit for, and it's more of a trades type. And, and they have a big long list at ICC. And in fact, some of the other, some of the other high schools are already offering stick welding, different things. So you can also just take classes. You can take trades classes.
Yeah, it's not just programs. Yeah.
No, I, that, that's exactly what I'm.
It's all set up. We just gotta get.
I think a big part of this is, I, I'm not sure the answer on how to do it. But somebody needs to decide what the best way is to communicate this out to parents and students. 'Cause I think there's a lot more out there than what's being taken advantage of. And maybe it's as simple as simplifying our handbook. I, I had that as another goal, but simplifying what parents and students look at. And so there's a section that says vocational opportunities, you know, CNA program, perfect, dual credit classes at ICC.
Someone to help advocate or guide them in that direction.
Yeah.
If they don't know who to go to, who do I ask if I'm interested in this?
And some of them have a long, have a long lead times. Like the CNA program, I think you have a plan in January for next fall. And then for some of the trades, I believe it's March. So if these parents don't know what's going on, they, they just may miss it.
It's almost like, somebody needs to develop, I think, a communication and implementation plan.
Sorry, I was referring to those, they're called pathways.
Okay.
We're modeling the district of North. The, the national reference for their pathways, probably thirty-five different pathways. So if you have a student that's interested in making, you wanna be an architect. As you walk in the door, you'll see a pathway. If you wanna be an architect, get rid of the course plan board.
And we have that right now in our curriculum guide, right?
Yeah.
It's called clusters or something?
Yeah.
Career clusters?
We're more refined.
Okay. So that's on the, that's already being developed and. When is the goal, when is the goal projected? Okay. When, when did they project that that will be available for students to follow? I mean, when will that be done?
I don't know. It's kind of the goal for the year was to get that done. So by the end of the year, it's for sure. I had, I had checked with them on their progress, essentially. But they know, and then the entire council department can make that happen. That is my expectation for the year. That's part of my goals. So it's part of my goals. It's not part of yours. We have eight years to work on.
When you say year, do you mean the calendar year of the school year?
That sounds excellent.
Let's see, number four, number one. Communication. Communication. Kinda jumping trees with your arms around, so. Communication. Yes, we have approved communication to parents and students of offerings, policies, and general school information.
I think some kind of parent stuff would really go. It's not just anything they do. So somebody needs to go to students, for example, China, the classes. I think a bit more of a four year plan, what they want, and that, that goes to the parish, you know. So many of these classes, you have to begin the right courses of freshman to keep going on the right track, wanting to get some honors for that. And I think parents don't know now about their curriculum and maybe it's gonna get harsh and maybe you plan it earlier.
Okay, how do you, how do you observe that from a basic?
Educating.
How do you know that's gonna be that?
I don't know if it's like increased communication, the packet that goes out, or if it's individual conversations with parents and having them, giving them the offering of coming in at some point and talking about it, or if it's adding to the back to school night, even though that's really early, but saying, hey, for you eighth graders, you need, when the parents are there that night. That's, that's when you get the most parents of the eighth grade. Kind of informing them and educating them about high school offerings. I don't know. I mean, it's almost like you need to brainstorm on what the best way to, is to do this.
I think that's a, that's a, that is a very uncertain time when you're sending your child for the first year of high school. And, you know, one back to school night may or may not cut it. I know in, in the junior high back to school night, it was a pretty packed house. And probably couldn't hear if you didn't get there early and get a front seat 'cause you're clear back out in the, what do they call them? The commons or the town center or whatever. But I don't know if you could have various sessions for kids that are interested in various groups, if they would break out, you know, after the main presentation and if your children are interested. You'd have to have a lot of sessions probably. I don't know. But I, I think that, you know, just one general back to school night may not be enough for them to understand fully what it is they have to be doing to advocate for their child, whether it's trades or.
College prep.
Whatever, you know, path. Maybe that child doesn't know yet if they're college ready or, you know, what their interest is. But, you know, I don't know what kind of communication is available if they had a question. You know, are they able to call the counselors and have a conversation? It's a lot of kids and that's, it's kinda hard for the counselors to get to every parent, so.
I have something longer to come. I don't know if you guys should, uh, curriculum guide, you can have something about. Here's about ICC. Here's what an ACT test is. Here's what an SAT test is. Here's the PSAT. So these new parents coming in. It's just, they're overwhelming. The PSAT's the one that gets you something scholar.
PSAT.
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 So, if it were at least in the curriculum guide.
Yeah, maybe additions to the curriculum guide.
That would talk about these offerings. Just to have a year to kind of have a clue. Or if you wanna go down the honors track, better just sign up for honors bio, you know, first year, because it just keeps on going.
Right.
And I don't think they realize that.
And maybe it's multiple avenues of communication. So, something at back to school night, something in the handbook. And, and I think periodic things on social media, or e, and emails.
Email, yeah.
Emails is really the best. You know, just a reminder. If you wanna sign up to, for the CNA program, you, you need to do that in the next month.
Right. Deadline's January twenty.
Yeah, deadlines are real important.
You know, because you can't count on your students always to, to tell you that kinda thing.
Parents don't know either.
Right.
Well, you've lived through it if you've had children in high school, you know.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's not like at the elementary school where the parents know what's going on and you get a newsletter weekly. You, you know.
There's just so much here. It's hard to communicate.
Right. And, and they don't even provide it on the announcements. They probably couldn't. It would take up too much time.
Right.
It's like the first kid's a guinea pig.
So unless you're reading the counseling website, you know, you're missing out on a lot. Now, the counseling department does now have a Facebook page, but you know, unless you're going through Facebook and seeing it, you're not seeing when the scholarship opportunities come up. I've, I've caught some of those things and sent them off to friends, but I don't know that there's a comprehensive communication on those.
I think the email is one of the best ways because it hits the parents.
Yeah.
I see a money making.
That's all I have. I mean, I mean, looking at counselors. I don't see a patron except for good. I'm not a high school kid. I get emails, different things all the time. I know they're always on social media. I see their posts. Maybe we're applying that a little bit. I don't know if that goes like, I can talk with them. I get what you're saying. It's hard for me to put a specific out, so a lot of the types don't.
And maybe it's a twice a month or once a month or once a week newsletter that goes out in an email. And if people wanna opt out of it, they can, you know. But if you wanna receive this counseling newsletter with a lot of informa, extra information, then you can get it.
I mean, it could even be ISU's coming this week to, for students who are interested or, you know, do you know about Furia Promise? You know, do you know that you can get a fifty percent reduction in tuition after high school if you go that route? Just.
Yeah, lots of things.
A lot of people don't, they don't think they can do that because they're like, well, we're in Furia, we're in Dunlap. And anything that loses Furia pays city taxes, can't do that. So it's just, I think there's a lot of.
Yep.
People don't know.
It's a moral application.
I think Teresa had a comment.
Lisa? I'm just, I, I don't have, I have older kids, but can we, is there some technology out there or something where you could have all of this in one location that parents could? where you could have all of this in one location that parents could, and I don't know, maybe there is, that they have all the classes, and when I did this, it was paper. I don't know that it's still paper, if it's paper. But that they can put scenarios in there so they know what is needed for what class. And that would include all of the same information that you guys are talking about. There's going to be one place where you go for all the information you're talking about for curriculum. That's also going to provide information on all those opportunities with colleges and what is needed. Is, I don't know, maybe there's another district that does that, but how's that, that we can replicate? But something that is easier than that piece of it. I think we need to explore technology and utilize that as much as we can.
And the curriculum guide is online, it's just.
But can you, can you put scenarios in there?
Are you saying interactive?
To tell you, if I do this, I can't do that because I need this.
It's kind of confusing. It's not. It is confusing. I mean, like we need the exemption page alone. After you guys pointed it out, I read through it. It was like, if you do this, and if it's that, and it's zero. I mean, it was very confusing how this was written.
You know, you can put your scenarios in, it's going to tell you what you need. And it has all of that information that you need at one site, rather than trying to work at the counseling page and look here and get emails and all of that. I think that's something we need to look at, that would streamline and be more efficient for the parents as well. So I think, you know, best practices, once again, is there someone who has this down that we can replicate or look at?
I think the interactive ones are expensive. I mean, it's like, it's what colleges have.
Well, what if you had something like, okay, here's a section on the handbook on trades. Click here if you want more information on, then you click trades and you have electrician, you know, plumber, whatever it is. You know, that might be a little bit.
It may just be, it may just be organizing it better and having clickable, you know, table of contents.
And is there, as a parent, if you did a curriculum, if you proposed to look at it right now? What is there going to be providing, to be, you know, built upon and then be what people want there?
I think for this year, you can take what you have and just update it.
Yeah. The board will a lot of things.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Is that something that can be short-term? And when we're looking at these, I want to make sure that when we put those goals out there for you guys, they're attainable by the year. So just to make sure that we can attain these.
That would mean a lot more.
That's what I want to make sure. I don't want to put something that's not attainable for you out there.
Shorter, typically, year one.
Yes.
And is that going to be done this year? Probably not.
That's why I wouldn't want to put that.
But maybe part of it could.
Are there certain things that?
There could be aspects of it that could.
And we've already done that, there are certain things, I don't know, that I can't put out. Yeah, you're right. How?
I want, I want to make sure you guys are successful and can attain those goals.
Website changes, interacting with this.
Right.
That's a part of the goal.
And registration starts in November, so, yeah.
There's no time.
November, yes. That's why I have the facilities over here, district office and grounds, grounds and maintenance. Are a start.
Is the district office?
Yeah, district office.
Now, short-term for that, that piece of it, well, we'll know what we're going to do. I'm hoping the board will do that before. When we talk twenty nineteen, twenty, is that at the end of June? Is it the school year?
Typically, I would go school years.
It won't be completed by then, but.
But we need, we should.
But you should have a plan.
But the plan will be in place.
And hopefully we won't be renting for another year.
So, something like a plan by January, three, three.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I have a plan.
So the plan is to be in by next January?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
So it would have to be much earlier. The plan would have to be done earlier.
What do you think, we'll have a plan by?
We will have a proposal by February, at the latest.
Okay.
Friday.
And can you maybe shoot the email about who's on the committee to the rest of the board so that they can be aware?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And there's something in charge of that.
I didn't realize I was going to have a goal. Yes, I'll take care of that.
You already have a goal.
The other one, there's grounds and maintenance.
Yes.
Grounds and maintenance.
Facilities and grounds. Well, let's see, how many times Tim calls and I call about weeds? I don't know. I think we could put a plan in place for various options that they can provide help. You know, I know you can't use children as labor unless their parents agree to it. You know, I mean, there, we can maybe have a plan in place for, for.
Community service hours? Does anyone do their community service hours at the school to do schoolwork?
They do for, like, all the athletic teams have, many of them have camps. And they get service hours through working at those camps, so.
Is there an ag, is there an ag club? Do we have an ag club?
An ag?
We have FFA.
FFA, Future Farmers America.
They have a horticulture club, too.
Horticulture.
Oh.
Is that contracted out, the grounds?
Yes.
No.
No, not that.
Isn't it?
Just the mowing, or?
The mowing, yes.
Just the mowing, but land.
Oh, so our staff.
No, we put the walls down, so all the weeds are, are building, the buildings. Really, guys over at Restless. Stay up.
And what about the lawn? Do you have lawn care, other than mowing? Other than mowing, there's no lawn care? I mean, as far as preventative weeds, dandelions in the lawn, too?
Well, I can say, well, you can't lawn, sure, this is true. The ground.
Huge. Yeah, we don't.
Well.
Right, we do on our athletic.
Sure, but not the academic fields. I mean, I can just, I see whiningers out there mowing, and they're mowing mostly weeds because it's weeds that grow in the grasses here and weeds are up here. So they're mowing weeds. So if you didn't have them weeds, you maybe wouldn't have to mow as much as a thought. There is a lot of dandelions, if you look in the spring, around this facility. And I don't think it would cost that much for someone to put a preventative on for that anyway. I think it should be looked into.
How long is that contract in place?
I'm sorry?
How long is the contract, pardon me?
This year, the year.
Okay, take a look at it and change.
I'm sorry?
We could always take a look at that and look at the scope and see where we're at.
Yeah. And have them bid for how much it would cost? For what, how many treatments, one or two?
One would keep the dandelions.
One, the one treatment of dandelions?
So we can measure this by getting some bids at that time, what are your charges for preventative?
And looking to see also if service clubs at the high school and other schools would want to, suggesting that as an opportunity for service hours.
Yeah. I mean, I suppose the custodians can use it in some other areas, too, inside the building, not outside of it, I mean.
Yeah. It's also just a good thing to have people learn to take care of their place, you know? It's like a Montessori thing.
Um, we have reviews to facilities.
Five.
Review staffing needs.
Review staffing needs.
Is that done on a yearly basis with building principals already?
I don't know officially, no.
I mean, they have to come to you if they have staffing requests every year when they hire for the fall or.
For teaching positions. I'm not sure exactly whether. I think this might be part of mine, without speaking over yours, considering, I think this is part of mine in the conversations, for the discrepancy in pay between people that were here pre-cut versus post-cut, and the problem that causes with custodial staff, rivals, not supposed teaching staff, or counselors, and the discrepancies that you have in those, and then what that causes as far as our inability to attract and retain non-servant staff.
So it would be more salary, reviewing of salary, competitive salary.
Benchmarking type stuff.
Can you start something about that? I think benchmarking is a good word. Benchmarking counselors.
And the director of transportation was going to.
Part of that was.
Okay. And provide some recommendations, right?
That was, will you be up for information at that point?
You'll be presenting those?
Presentation, I have.
Okay, thank you. Safety.
Safety, I should practice this, but maybe this is not, I don't think all of this is not safety's priority. Been through diligent issues, but it's true, they have forecasted, actually, people see football wire, they're around there, you know, that's something. Official SROs, so that is certainly a priority. I mean, the thought process, that's the interest, particularly, I think, always a concern, something to keep at the top of your mind. Any short-term goals, maybe for safety?
Just finishing what they're doing, that's measurable by just seeing that they're completed.
And I think maybe, you know, I know, I know, go ahead, they have drills, you know, I mean, just maybe a report to the board on what's being done in terms of staff planning, preparation, coordination with the sheriff's office on drills and stuff like that.
They have to do, they have to do that anyway.
Sheriff's office about.
Right. But I don't think they do it to us. They don't tell you.
Something that needs to be updated, most of the forecast system put in place. It's our, we have updated teams and stuff, the plan itself, maybe the updated crisis plan. It's a whole new system, and it's not going to be in there. And how do we respond when, you know, Valley gets to the end, but when they go on lockdown, everybody's going to know, it's going to go out, so everybody's informed. Because right now, that's not really a complete ability that we have in high school or a lockdown. They call me, let me know, I have the ability, but with this, we know, naturally, we can broadcast it out to all the other buildings. And that's the conversation we had, you know, what protocol do we have as far as if Valley goes on lockdown, what do we do in high school? Do we put them on lockdown, or they have soft lockdown, what do we do with EGS? That's the conversation we had. Right now, crisis management, that's, it's set as to call district office, let district office know what's going on, and they can communicate out what our steps are.
What if we could have, like, maybe a quarterly report on how that's progressing?
On how, what's.
Your safety plan and how you're updating it.
Crisis management plan.
Crisis management plan or whatever, but.
That would probably come more over here, because that informer gas system is not, it's being installed, it's not done.
That's fine. You said that they're not informing us of when they're having drills. I know they have to have them on a regular basis.
Or just like, what's being, what drills are being done, and what kind of drills are being done, and how effective they are, and what are other measures to make sure that we're doing little things like checking on doors, you know what I mean?
That kind of thing, I think, is probably one of your most important safety issues, is making sure the doors are shut. But as far as a school, they have to have so many drills. They have to have an intruder drill. They have, and we know that that's planned. And our, I don't know how the other schools do it, but typically, I know at Valley, we'll get an email saying, we had a fire drill today, or we had a. So they're informing the parents, but I'm not sure if that's what you mean to let.
That's what I was getting at. It only has to be, I don't know if it has to be every quarter, but maybe once a year, we say, we're going to do this many drills and.
This required by our being told.
Yeah.
I mean, you already.
A lot, you don't.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I don't know that we see it.
Can the boards have maybe have the, know what the yearly thing is? I think so. You have a safety facility plan. That gets reviewed with the board, isn't that correct?
No.
Crisis plan?
I don't think so.
Like, you meet with the police officers and the fire department, the first responders, I mean, that's once a year. We used to have to do that every summer. And then you usually report that to the board when you have that, or you'll put it in your weekly podcast.
I don't remember seeing it, do you?
I remember hearing, saying that he went to the, to that.
Okay.
Crisis.
Oral.
Yeah, just an oral report.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I wouldn't do it any way.
Yeah, it's required.
Very short, something we need to, one-way signs, stop signs.
Yeah, I agree. That's kind of a really easy.
People aren't here all the time, they don't know which way is one-way, like football games or coming for some tennis clinic. I think it'd be okay to have stop signs right here where the pedestrians' crossings are, because the kids don't stop. They just like, they just walk. And if somebody's coming here, is not used to these kids just running out. I think there should be stop signs at the, or at least the crosswalk signs at each crosswalk, so people know, stop.
Mm-hmm. And the do not enter or one-way.
Yeah. I almost ran into somebody last summer.
Let's do that.
They're going along.
Additional signage in the park that I gave her, it's against the period, obviously, you can see it, for a measure.
Mm-hmm.
Very short-term.
I don't want to put it in the informer gas system waters, that's a word in progress.
Okay.
But I think that one is an easy one. Long-term, certainly, I'm thinking. That over there, and that will threaten the situation, because that's part of the impact. Any doors that open, except the alarm, how long do we want to build before it starts buzzing? And it'll also automatically push it out, we'll have a more.
So I saw, when I was coming in the other day, I saw somebody opening one of those doors in the back to let somebody in. So that would immediately notify that.
Depending on the time, yeah.
But actually, this is, I mean, this is an historic session.
Eight o'clock, morning, the front doors are open, because they're going to build all the town. But if that door's open again, and left open at five fifteen, that's wrong. All right, have we got all of these?
Number five, social emotional.
Social emotional review staff.
I think it was Cheryl's. Or did anybody else have it?
We had it kind of over there, their cultural diversity and long-term.
Not sure what.
Maybe Cheryl could elaborate it, elaborate on it for you later.
Short-term goal, that is, if we were to continue reviewing, first half of the year, making appropriate changes. In high school, for example, we had a mental health counselor who responded to social moments that they were experiencing. I don't, I don't have any, so I, I can just reach Cheryl. Well, over here, facilities. They kind of bunch these together. Finance, we've got budget forecasting. When we look at long-term goals, I think Mike and Teresa and I were kind of looking at three years. Around, I almost speak for those, I think it's like a three-year plan. So with that, doing something with finance, budget forecasting, I think that makes sense. And then updated quarterly, inching. I think that pretty much speaks for itself.
Yep.
We really need to elaborate on it. One being growth needs. And these are our facilities, growth needs, maintenance needs, safety needs. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think we've kind of already addressed that, just like the safety plan, it's ongoing, but it's also something that's going to continue and change.
I think for this, like, the growth needs, you know, we pay decision inside the number of sports and give us their analytics. We continue to monitor that. Contract, maintenance plan, but a lot, I think that goes into budgeting.
Yeah. And I think facility growth needs goes into budgeting, too, and, you know, deciding, looking at it and saying, okay, when would we really have to add on to an elementary school? And should we start saving for that, or should we start planning, you know, that some of our reserves will be used for that? Or are we going to look at bond, you know, selling, doing that through bonds or?
Referendum.
I think that builds in, we didn't really touch on it here, because it was a, on risk, but athletic leadership, you know, they have a field. They call it, and it feels like it's great, but financially, it's feasible, it's a wise choice. You know, it'll be bad at the time right now, but maybe it takes a change. But I think that's part of that forecasting model, that they have to work, if they have a windfall, can. I would want to. Uh, other ones, a curriculum, they have rating consistency, research based best practices. And then partnership with trades and communicate that out. I think we've already kind of hit that for the short term, so that should carry over.
I think the second one kind of falls into your curriculum specialist type.
I think some of it will be addressed. We have Matt, it's, it's titled as our curriculum director right now, because we had our birthday very close to the start of the year. At the time, he just wasn't bringing you a confidence and search for a replacement. I said at that time, I, we would post probably the whole timeline, probably posting that first part, no, for, for a, for a person. Obviously, Matt's doing an interview now, he'll be applying, he may be the person, he may not, I, I don't know. Who's it, he's the best candidate in his position at that time, but I think that person, whoever that is, needs to follow them. Because these are long term goals, to get all this straightened out, doing some work now, um, looking somewhat kind of spearheading that.
Which just reminds me that probably short term, a short term goal for curriculum is evaluating the position of curriculum director. And whether or not that should be, that salary should be increased. During the budget cuts of last time, we dramatically reduced that, uh, salary so that, and, you know. I, I just think we might want to evaluate that, especially since it's coming up pretty soon that you're going to put the, the notice, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know how other people feel about that, because that's just my thought.
Well, if they're going to post in November, I'd say yes, it's now, might be a closed session kind of discussion.
Yeah. I get what you're saying, but, you know, that's a special law to have.
Okay, I didn't know if it could be closed session.
And then lastly, uh, social emotional learning, um, we've got culture and then recognition of diversity. Long term, we have a best initiative, having in elementarys and junior highs, we have Scott doing, uh, sort of justice at the high school. You know, Scott brought it up, I mean, and the principals agree. They are very similar, but they are different and just trying to communicate those philosophies and align that so that they are. Uh, as those elementary students progress towards it. So, you know, that's going to take some time, because they're both very, very long in that process, but over time, we can get around. And then last one is, uh, decision making. And that's basically decisions need to be made, um, the mission statement drives decision. The last one.
And we talked about with Rita that, um, you should review your mission statement and the balance scorecard and review that every year with, and especially when there's a new board. So I know we are talking about changing the strategic plan, but she did talk about that it's, it's ra, it's, it should be a, a live document, a, what do you call it?
Working?
A working document. And so I don't know if we have another session at some point to review all of those.
Then Mike, Roy, and again, Matt presenting, um, the five essentials, because we're moving away from C S D I survey. We're over the five essentials and then we needed to add some questions. These five essentials is the state package, you know, we can customize that way, we're paying for C S D I. Five essentials is free, that's one of the things we're going to take the money. Uh, but we'll put out a separate survey, hit some of the things on the balance scorecard that the five essentials doesn't. Maybe that's the time we have that conversation.
Right, and you know, in the past, I'll just mention, um, a few years ago, we, we have from time to time put out surveys to parents. Where it'll be one question on one issue. And we may want to ask the board to think about strategically, are there other questions we want to ask when we make our own survey? So that we're not sending out multiple surveys? And it's just one?
Well, Matt will be presenting that as information item, that's why I said question, I have that discussion at that time. Anything else would be good to come up?
So to recap, are we going to type all this into some kind of document and then maybe periodically revisit how we're doing on these or?
Well, I plan to do is, you know, we talked about a lot, I've got some notes here, areas where it, where it can tell, you know, they, take this and maybe put it in more organized fashion. And then we'll put that out to you guys, um, for review. And then we'll talk maybe as an information item, um, at the next meeting on what do you want to do as the next steps as far as reporting.
Okay, thank you.
It's a lot of information at one time, it's.
Process it.
Process it, organize it, and we'll make a better decision as far as.
Can we add one word to short term? That would be to, to look at whether we want to have a sidewalk going parallel to the building for the pedestrians.
That would be added to safety.
Yes.
We need to add that parking lot too.
Yes. Go ahead.
What street is that?
Legion Hall Road, not Legion Hall Road?
Coming off of Legion Hall, going parallel to the building.
It's the driveway.
The driveway, the, uh, or with the resource officer stands.
Yes.
Um, senior hills. Yeah? More regard to, to use the stand for, for, the seat there.
It's not a road. It's internal.
No, but it's, it's inside.
No, it's not a road.
It's just a school driveway.
School driveway, yeah.
School driveway.
And along those lines, I'm sorry.
Allison Avenue.
Tim, um.
There you, yeah, there you go.
Dr. Dermot.
Love that.
Tim just brought up, we didn't have parking lot on there, but, um, for under facility, I think we need to add, um.
Maybe under maintenance needs.
Yes.
There's him, there's maintenance plan.
Short term, no problem.
Short term.
You mean for the kids that don't have a parking spot?
You know, a review of whether or not we, we need to reduce the number of parking passes or increase the parking, or is it not a problem?
Or to determine if people are parking in there that don't have a pass. And so the kids that do have a pass can't find their spot. Number, I don't know.
Then under short term safety, I think we need to.
Hang on, I got three things coming at me here, and one of the first one, we're at.
Sidewalk, sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
What?
Hickory Grove, roundabout.
So we got the Hickory Grove, roundabout. Tim, what was your add on?
Parking lot.
Suggesting additional parking.
Additional parking. Okay. And you said parking at high school, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and Teresa, I think. So under safety, I've got this school sidewalk by the driveway, I was to call it. Um, the Hickory Grove, roundabout, and then additional parking at high school. Good?
Let me just repeat one thing and then I want to make it clear, my comments earlier about, um, getting some professional assistance to perhaps help us with the investments. I want to make it clear that that in no way, um, uh, suggests that I'm criticizing Damon. He's got a, he's got a huge job. You all know what he's doing, and he wears a number of hats, including H R. So if anything, this would be just us to, to assist in the performance of those dirty duties. And, and I don't want anybody walking away saying that I'm criticizing the job that Damon's doing, I want to make that clear.
Yeah, some of this is higher treasure, so, I'm more into it.
But you can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Are we done? No more comments? Does anybody feel like they were able to share and hear their, have their voices heard? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We got three.